the Outer County Board of Commissioners. And I will roll this over to Beth Jones for any adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, sir, Chairman Mallory. We have two adjustments to the agenda, and they're both additions under new business. One is an ETJ appointment, and the other is an airport update.
We'll be doing both of those at seven o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda, Commissioners? Okay, we, this evening, don't have any special recognitions or awards. We have two appointments, one from John Henderson from the Mecklenburg County Young Marines. I think this, every year, we've had a young man or woman from that organization ask us to do a proclamation, proclamation, proclamation. God, Lord. And then Patty West from Diakonos Fifth Street Ministries, also asking for us to recognize October's Domestic Valence Awareness Month. Public hearings, we have the 2012 Public Transportation Program Resolution, a public hearing, and as well, the discussion on the general obligation bond referendum. So why don't we roll right into administrative matters, and then if we want to consider circling back and, you know, doing a preview of some of the slide deck for the public hearing on the general obligation bonds, we can do that.
Okay.
After we've taken care of any closed session matter.
Okay.
Okay. If you'll please summarize the, or go ahead and kick off the presentations for administrative matters and item eight, appropriate for consideration on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was request from Planning and Development, and Matthew Todd is here to request consideration to call for a public hearing on October the 15th, 2019, in regard to text amendments to the land development code.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item had come up at one of the previous meetings, and the board had identified, I think, five different items for us to take back to the planning board. We've taken those back to the planning board and have made some changes, or we attempted to address the question. So, the air quality, the tainment issue was brought up, and what we found out is, you know, anything could affect air quality, but essentially, that is why the state requires an air permit for these air burners, because they are truly monitoring those. So, we do feel, I mean, yes, does it have an impact? The answer is yes, it could have an impact, but the scale that you're talking about is so minimal with the number of these operations, that staff just doesn't feel that that's going to be an issue. The other thing that came up was the setbacks from streams of 100 feet that we proposed. That actually mirrors the same setbacks as we have for rock quarries, so, you know, going above that seemed maybe not the best route. And one of the things that was mentioned was adding a review or an inspection process, and we did propose to add that. That's the fifth item that was kind of addressed. So there would be a yearly inspection of these sites, so we felt at that point, if we noticed that there's any erosion that's occurring, we could get that addressed through different measures at that point. The other thing that was brought up was just clarifying temporary versus permanent. Again, if you're developing a subdivision, you're processing stuff on that site, that's more the temporary, it would have different requirements. If you're a business that's wanting to set up a location to start receiving materials from other locations, that's going to be the more the permanent type, which requires that special use permit through the Board of Adjustment. So we made that clarification. And then, kind of the last thing that we looked at was, we had some verbiage in there that said dust and the verbiage of adversely impacting. We took a while scratching our heads on that of how to get away with the subjectivity. I think it was mentioned that we defined adversely impacting, but even when we tried to write a definition for adversely impacting, we still had subjectivity in it. So we stepped back and looked at, tried to look at how other places handled dust, and the best thing we could come up with was that we're putting it kind of back on the applicant to provide a dust management plan that, again, would be part of the review through the Board of Adjustment. So with what's required there, they're going to tell us the ways that they're going to handle their dust, and then they're also going to tell how they're going to handle their dust when that first set of standards don't take care of the problem. And again, that would be part of what's submitted to the Board of Adjustment, so there'd be a level of review on those dust management plans through that process as well. But that was in trying to get away from any subjectivity associated with dust. But those were the changes from the last meeting, and then, of course, they're sprinkled throughout the code. And this is just asking for the call for the public hearing at the next meeting, but I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
I think we talked about this a little bit last time. If you tried to write into the code rules for every conceivable situation, the code for just this one portion starts to look like the King James Bible. I mean, it's just thick and confusing, and it's a mess. I'm okay with some degrees of freedom, so long as we abide by the let common sense prevail be, you know, be something that guides us, which means, you know, we keep a good handle on who we hire to make these interpretations, and also stealing, ripping a page out of the Army is, understand commander's intent, understand what the intent is. The intent isn't to smother folks, but rather to help make sure that they're good neighbors. The part about the dust, I'm empathetic. If you go out here on Court Street, it's easy to find my car. It's the one that's under about a quarter of an inch of dust, just because of my road and being on the farm and dew in the morning and dust in the afternoon, it just, it's a mess. So we're not promising folks that there will never be any dust, but there's a difference between that and when somebody has paid no consideration at all to it. So I went over it very closely, and I feel that this is, this is well-written. It's as comprehensive as I think is safe to be, and I can support it as written.
Any other comments?
Well, it says R-67 source reduction facilities, facility. Is that the only category that it affects?
The R-67, but also R-54, which is basically a stump dump.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's the burning of brush and debris and the dumping of stumps, which would be consistent with the LCID permit?
Correct.
And this burner that is relatively new on the scene right now, does it have all of the state approvals and everything to do that with?
Yes, that's where they'll have to have that air permit through the state, which actually is a federal permit that the state is handling.
Which is actually burning limbs and lamps and debris and stuff right there on-site. Some grind, very few people bury, some people create burns, but now this is an opportunity to actually incinerate it there on the site.
And again, to operate one of those, you do have to be licensed through the state, and you have to be on-site. So you just can't have an employee that's licensed, and he's off on vacation, and you've got other people operating it. Whoever holds the license has to be there on-site.
Any additional comments or questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Staff did a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate the board's work on that as well.
Okay, the next item is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a three-year agreement with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture to provide space for the Forestry Service housed at the County Agriculture Center, and Dean Lael is here to make this request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Beth mentioned, we have been renting to the Forestry Service's 500-square-foot office for a long, long time. They've been pretty much a fixture in our agricultural building, and by all accounts that I've talked to, everybody feels that they are a definite advantage at being there for the county. They've requested that we renew our lease. We do these leases every three years. We do not have renewal clauses in the leases. That's in case we decide we need the space, and in case they decide they need to move out. So we basically renegotiate this lease just about every three years. This current lease, I've been working with the Forestry Service for a few months. It is, again, a three-year lease, no automatic or no renewal options in it. We put into it this year a 1.25% increase per year into the lease, so that we'll keep that space up to current pricing for utilities, janitorial, and general upkeep and maintenance out there. They agreed to that, they're happy with that arrangement. And we have already met all the requirements. We did do the, I did do the 30-day notice, so we've met that requirement, and if the board does approve it, there should be two copies for the chairman's signature at the end of the meeting.
So is this basically two offices?
It is. It's really, yeah, two, a large office in a small area.
It's not much space. It makes sense for them to be right there.
Yeah.
And they are not the only state agency in that building, correct?
Yes, we have, we have several.
Okay, any additional questions for Dean? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you, Dean. And he actually has the next item as well, which is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a resolution to sell county-owned property located at 4600 Harmony Highway and authorization of the process.
The county acquired this property a little bit earlier in this year. This property is, again, at 4600 Harmony Highway. It's quite a ways out. There's a map inside your brochure that shows it to be a long way out on Harmony Highway. The property was bought by an individual who had upfitted for a single-wide mobile home. He had a septic system put on it. The unfortunate part is that the property is zoned for a minimum of a double-wide or larger. So we came to acquire that property through that process. We're at a point where we need to try to move the property, let somebody else have it, get it off our books, and we'd like to try a couple of things on this property if the board would approve. We would like to try to advertise the property ourselves, to try to generate that first initial offer or first initial bid on the property. If we do get a reasonable offer or bid on that property, we bring that to the board. If you approve it, accept it, then we jumpstart the upset bid process. If we don't, then we would additionally ask that if we cannot meet or get that first offer, allow me to work with a local realtor, negotiate rates to be able to market that property, just to get that first initial bid. Very similar to what we looked at in the past, we've done this before, and it worked well. Matter of fact, we did this for a piece of property that, when we tried to market ourselves, we didn't get very far. When we did the real estate agent, we really did well on selling that property, a lot better than we expected. So I think the combination of the two would give us the most freedom in moving that and be able to move that and get it off the county's books. If you do agree to that process, it is finely tuned and written out in the resolution that's in your packet, and I'll be glad to try to answer any other questions you might have on that.
With that process, then you would use a realtor to get the first initial bid, and then it would go to an upset bid process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then he has the next item as well, which is a request from the Finance Department for approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of property acquired by tax foreclosure and approval of the recommended disposal method.
Continue with the Dean Lael Show.
The Dean Lael Show, I just decided I don't like standing up here that much. Yes, this next one, 174 Bent Brook Road out in Wayside Estates, off of Highway 70 going towards Salisbury. We acquired this through tax foreclosure just a couple of months ago, went through all the steps that we need to be able to prepare it for sale. I've got pictures in your brochure. This one's a little different from the 4600 Harmony. The 4600 Harmony is a straight lot. I think it warrants selling it the way we recommend it. This piece of property is one of those that has a few issues to it. It's going to take a little bit more. Our main intent on selling the property is to get back the taxes that are owed on it. We have done well on these. We've brought in often a lot more than we started out with, which is always good, but it's never been the intent to. With that, I've typically listed it on Gov. Deals. I do have to advertise, again, the 30-day notice on both properties that we talked about tonight, but I do list this on Gov. Deals, try to keep it up there 14 or more days, try to get the best offer. If we get an initial offer, that offer, again, has to come back to you. You have to approve it and accept it or reject it. If you approve it, then we take the steps to sell it right off the bat. The buyer has to pay immediately on Gov. Deals the entire purchase price of the property. So it's secured by that. If you reject it, we release the property, we look at other avenues. Again, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Any questions or comments? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you very much.
Dean, I look forward to hearing about your real estate sales prowess.
It's going to take a Zig-Ziegler course, yeah.
Yeah, it gets interesting, it does. Thank you.
I'm surprised he didn't recommend the Forestry Service for that piece of property. I'm just kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, it looked like they had some trees growing out of it.
And the final item for consideration by the board is a request from the clerk to the board for approval of the minutes from the meeting on September the 17th, 2019.
All right, folks had an opportunity to review those minutes. Consent?
Consent.
Okay, we have one announcement and a vacancy for the Recreation Advisory Board. There are no appointments to boards or commissions scheduled for this evening, although our new business, a little later, we will discuss the ETJ appointment, and no unfinished business anyone's aware of. This is not a public comment period. Do you want to go ahead and tee up the ETJ discussion?
If you'd like to.
Just a brief discussion before we go into the seven o'clock hour.
Okay, we can certainly do that. We, if the board will recall, we appointed an ETJ representative for the Mooresville Town Planning Board at our last meeting. And typically what our practice is for the Board of Commissioners is, if we have a seated member that is willing to serve again, we typically defer to that seated member as a reappointment because of the institutional knowledge that that member has. We were not aware that the seated member was interested in serving again, and we made an appointment of a new member. So what is before the board and what will be considered and discussed among the board is the possibility of rescinding that appointment that was done at the last meeting, and then if the board has the will to do that, to appoint the seated, the seated member that I think had been serving for about 20 years, if I remember correctly, and it was just, we were not aware that that member was willing to serve again.
He was, he's planning to serve about one more, and then that's it.
And we, we feel like it was a procedural oversight.
Right.
And I think it would really behoove us to, Colley, go back and revisit our policies and procedures on nominating and appointing ETJ members in all jurisdictions. I think it would help us.
And we can certainly do that. We're going to, we're going to check with some other counties and see what their policies and procedures are regarding those ETJ appointments and how that works within municipalities, and we will, we can certainly come back to the board with a policy and practice for doing that going forward, and we apologize for the oversight on this one.
But, I mean, typically for all of our boards that we appoint people to, that it's, we're always, it's indicated if the existing person is not going to run again, or, excuse me, isn't interested in, interested in serving or is, so, again, it's just, it's one of the belts and suspenders, okay?
Right, right.
Okay. Procedurally, since we announced the vacancy earlier, are we able to fill that, to rescind and then fill that vacancy this evening, or do we need to put it on for a public hearing two weeks from now in order to fill that?
My understanding, based on our policies and procedures, since we've already announced it and we did have some applicants, then we're okay, we don't have to announce it again. It was just failing to realize that the seated member was willing to serve again. So I think you can do a recension of your previous appointment and then appoint that, reappoint that seated member if the board so chooses. But I'm going to defer to Ms. Valdez to make sure that that is correct.
It sounds as though it would be correct as far as, is the question, do you need to announce again?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't think that you do.
So we just need to rescind and then reappoint?
Yes, sir.
All right, and we'll hold that matter to the seven o'clock hour. And then I believe, just going to update us about the airport at the seven o'clock hour. And the county manager's report, is there any heads up you want to give us?
It is very brief, just to let everyone know that the date for the Commissioner's Fall Retreat is November the 8th, and it will be from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and the location will be at the public library. We were going to have it at the CAT Center, but that facility is already occupied for that day, but we're going to have it at the public library and then hopefully take you downstairs to the first floor and let you see the progress. We were getting the first floor ready to occupy, and we hope to have it ready by the end of the year, have it back open to the public and usable again.
And you said that begins at eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock, yes.
Okay. Do you want to talk about?
Is that date set in stone?
November the 8th. It's certainly up to the board. If the board would wish to change that date, that's.
Veterans Day weekend, and I may have boys getting some Army time off. I hate, they don't get it often, and I'd hate for them to travel back and then us not be there, so. If we can, I mean, right now, we'll have that as the date. Let me get back with you if we either need to move it or shoot to be done at 3:00 or something.
Okay.
If that's okay.
We can have a working lunch.
We can do that.
And dismiss early.
True.
We can adjust the hours.
And I can agree not to say as much.
You might can agree. I noticed that he omitted me. Oh, I guess that's a lost cause.
You do outrank us. But duly noted.
I think you outnumber me, that's the thing. If Jean sits on me, I'm done, so. Okay, do you want to go ahead and just discuss a little bit about the new computer system building standards? I know that Lynn's provided a little update for us. I know we've gotten some communication from various members, either the public or the contracting community, and we can just share that information now and at seven o'clock.
Absolutely, sure. Chairman Mallory had asked that I contact Lynn Niblock, who's over that department, and get him to put together some information regarding the computer system, which you all have in front of you. The decision to go with the computer software was multifaceted, in the fact that the system that they had was actually created as a financial piece of software, and it had a building inspections component to it, which was an add-on, which we did, but it did not have all the functionalities that a specific piece of software that was created specifically for this purpose would have. So with that in mind, went and looked at several different pieces of software and chose to go with this one due to the functionality and the fact that a lot of our clientele are wanting to be able to do things electronically and not have to come into the office. So trying to make sure that we had additional functionality for our customers, and it also had additional functionality for staff as well as regarding inspectors in the field and being able to upload attachments to various permits and things of that nature. So there was a lot of different pieces that went into the decision process. The transition to this new software has not been smooth, and we do fully admit that. We had some problems when the software went live. We actually, we had the understanding that everything was going to convert over seamlessly, and that, of course, did not happen. So what we had to do is bring up the old system. So the older permits were in the old system, and then the newer permits are in the new system, and they're working fine. It's just the conversion, getting the older permits into the new system. So we're having to have those systems up and going right now, and that is tedious and cumbersome as we go through that process. So some of the issues that we're having are for those contractors or those individuals that have multiple permits that are out there, some older permits in the old system and some new permits in the new system, and they're having to toggle back and forth between those, and our staff is having to do the same thing. That is not ideal, and the software company is working to resolve that. But some of the functionality that this software will provide for us is, and Lynn's listed this in bullet points, but it allows the contractors to upload attachments to the permit.
If Jean sits on me, I'm done, so...
Okay, do you want to go ahead and just discuss a little bit about the new computer system building standards? I know that Lynn's provided a little update for us. I know we've gotten some communication from various members of either the public or the, the contracting community, and we can just share that information now and at seven o'clock.
Absolutely, sure. Chairman Mallory had asked that I contact Lynn Niblock, who's over that department, and get him to put together some information regarding the computer system, which you all have in front of you. The, the decision to go with the computer software was multifaceted, in the fact that the system that they had was actually created as a financial piece of software, and it had a building inspections component to it, which was an add-on, which we, we did. But it did not have all the functionalities that a specific piece of software that was created specifically for this purpose would have. So with that in mind, went and looked at several different pieces of software and chose to go with this one due to the functionality, and the fact that a lot of our clientele are wanting to be able to do things electronically and not have to come into the office. So trying to make sure that we had additional functionality for our customers, and it also had additional functionality for staff as well as regarding inspectors in the field and being able to upload attachments to various permits and things of that nature. So there was a lot of different pieces that went into the decision process. The transition to this new software has not been smooth, and we, we do fully admit that. We had some problems when the software went live. We actually, we had the understanding that everything was gonna convert over seamlessly, and that, of course, did not happen. So what we had to do is bring up the old system. So the older permits were in the old system, and then the newer permits are in the new system, and they're working fine. It's just the conversion, getting the older permits into the new system. So we're having to have those systems up and going right now, and that is tedious and cumbersome as we go through that process. So some of the issues that we're having are for those contractors or those, those individuals that have multiple permits that are out there, some older permits in the old system and some new permits in the new system, and they're having to toggle back and forth between those. And, and our staff is having to do the same thing. That is not ideal, and the software company is working to resolve that. But some of the functionality that, that this software will provide for us is, and Lynn's listed this in bullet points, but it allows the contractors to upload attachments to the permits, such as engineer letters, soil reports, reducing the workload on the staff and expediting the projects and trying to get things turned around faster. It also allows us to connect with other departments, that we can't issue permits until other departments are doing their piece, for example, environmental health and the subject take permits and things of that nature, or if the health department has to do an inspection on a restaurant or something of that nature. And also shares information with the tax department to aid in the assessment of those, those new parcels. So there's a, there's a lot of different functionality that it has, but there is a learning curve with new software. We're learning it, staff's learning it, as well as our customers and our clients are learning it as well. And it's, it, it has been a process, and we're kind of all going through this together. What staff has tried to do is create very detailed step-by-step process of, of how you go about, and, and you know, if you're applying for a new permit, this is what you need to do, if, you know, and try to create those step-by-step instructions. I did mention to Lynn today maybe having some training classes where the software provider can come in and provide those hands-on training classes for people to come in and actually see. Chairman Mallory and I were talking about it today. I'm certainly a visual, so seeing is easier for me to learn than just reading it on a piece of paper. So we're gonna try to, try to create those classes and have kind of a, a training class for anybody that'd like to come to those. So we really are trying to, to reach out and do as much as we can, but it is a learning curve for all of us, and, and we're hoping to get a lot of the, the kinks worked out as quickly as possible. I will say, for pulling new permits in the system, it's working, and, and it's, that is working fine. It's, it's the old permits and the new permits that's creating some, some problems right now.
I heard you mention that the, the vendor was working on something to integrate the old permits with the new ones.
Yes.
Did they feel like that's gonna be a fix when they get it accomplished?
Yes, they're, that is something that, we bought the software with the understanding it's gonna do that, and we're gonna hold them accountable and make sure that it does that. So we, we certainly want it to do that, and that's what we're, we're asking for it to do. That's what we purchased it to do, is for everything to integrate and be in one system.
But worst case, you have two systems operating, when the old permits are ultimately disposed of, everyone will be under the new permits.
Correct.
We don't have that confusion.
It's gonna take a little time for attrition.
Yeah, but you also have the capability to still bring in the plans, to physically bring them in-
Yes.
And have them logged in as opposed to if you don't have the electronic capability of scanning those.
Absolutely. This by no means means that we, we don't still have walk-in traffic and customers that come in and physically bring in plans and, and things of that nature. So it's not trying to eliminate that, but it is trying to be sensitive to the fact that we have a county that's 40 miles long, and we have people that are all over the county that are wanting to do development, and we're trying to be more customer-friendly and not require everybody to drive into Statesville unless they absolutely want to, or they're already here and wanna physically bring in plans. We're just trying to give more functionality and make us more customer-friendly, and I know that our customers don't feel that way right now, but that, that was and that still is our goal and intent.
How about, is the, the efficiency piece with being able to have the inspectors download their work for the day so they're not driving from one end of the county back and forth? Are, is that, that, has that been interrupted or not?
What we were actually doing with the old software, it did not allow to sort, and so we were have, we had inspectors, and that's what they did in the morning, is sat down and went through all the permits and sorted and assigned. And this software will, does that automatically. So that's another, that's, that's more productivity, that's more time. Those inspectors were out there doing inspections instead of sorting and assigning. So it is, it's, the intent is to make us much more productive and much more efficient. That certainly is the intent.
But it's just gonna take a while to get there, through the vendor and through the learning curve.
We, we have some, some hurdles, but I will say that our, our staff has been amazing. We've put a lot on them, and, and to be quite honest, they've, they've taken a beating verbally. So they're, they're learning too, and I, my heart goes out to them because they are soldiers, and I'm saying to, to some military individuals that understand, but I mean, they're, they're working hard for us, and they've put a lot of time in, and they're committed to, to continue to get this fixed and, and work with us through this. But they have, they have taken a, a lot. Today's, today's been a day. I know that Ms. Robertson actually had to deal with some of it today. So it's, we're all feeling it, we're all hearing it. Change is difficult. Hands down, change is difficult, but we're, we're committed to, to make it right.
Anybody that remembers the day when whatever business you were in switched from MS-DOS to Windows.
Oh, yeah.
Like it was-
Greek, a terrible day.
This'll never work.
This is a sad.
Well, I think the training opportunities will be a big help for not only customers, staff, and, so we appreciate and, and ask that members of the, of the public that are using the system just give a little extra grace during this time period, and we'll all get through it.
I will say this, we, we are getting some complaints, but they're not specific, and we can't problem solve and specifically help you work through your problem with that unless we have some specifics. I know that Lynn Niblock is committed to, to walking through each specific situation if he had some detail. So, you know, some of the complaints that we're getting are very generic, just saying they're not happy with the software. Again, it, it's a learning curve, so if, if there's something that we can do to walk that through with them, or maybe there's, there's another issue that we're not aware of, but without those specifics and just getting the generic complaints, it's difficult for us to problem solve. So our staff is committed to, to work through those and try to help solve those, but we do need those specifics when, when those issues do crop up.
Well, and, and that's, that's an important point to make. You know, we get input from citizens, but when it comes in a unmarked envelope and it's anonymous, it's kind of hard to respond, because we take very seriously, you know, trying to address individual concerns and problems, and it's impossible to do that.
And there's nobody to follow-
If you don't know where the belly button is to push, then it's all a problem.
There's, there's no specific problem to solve, and there's nobody to follow up with, and that, that's frustrating for staff because they won't to try to fix the problem.
Okay, well, we'll give another little blast on that at the seven o'clock hour. I think the more people that can hear that, the better. All right. We'll now, move now into a close, anything further? We'll move it to a closed session for consideration of economic development pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 subsection A-4. So we are in a closed session.